Welcome, everyone. I call the September 10, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand as Reverend Peter Grana of Redeemer Lutheran Church leads us in invocation. Then I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, you have called us to be a community, to be one, as you are one. And we have called these people before me to lead. Empower them with your great Spirit to be courageous and bold in the face of things that need to be done. Give them wisdom and courage, and help us to support them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we'll have an electronic roll call. And I'll ask my colleagues to indicate your presence here by hitting the "yes" button. And Madam Clerk, we have 100% attendance.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is the consideration of minutes, the approval of these minutes. And we have the minutes of a call meeting of August 26, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of August 27, 2019, and the minutes of a regular meeting of August 27, 2019. We'll consider these all with one motion. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Any discussion on this motion? Here and none? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And that motion carries, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice the timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask you to conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first item of business is a public hearing. Public hearing, this is item 19-327 on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. 19-327, Public Hearing With Respect To The Proposed Adoption By The City Council Of A Resolution To Authorize The City To Contract A Debt And Issue Water And Sewer Revenue Bonds Of The City Or Notes In Anticipation Thereof In A Principal Amount Estimated Not To Exceed $36.8 Million To Finance With Respect To The City's Water And Sewer Systems Certain Costs Of Acquiring, Constructing, And Equipping Capital Improvements For Which Bonds Proceed Have Been Appropriated Pursuant To The City's Capital Improvement Program As The City Council May Amend It From Time To Time Hereafter And The Cost Of Issuance Of The Bonds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dr. Patton, you briefed council on this before. Do you have any comments?
I have Mr. Kyle Lux, who's here, Mayor, and he will come forward and just give a very brief presentation. He comes to us from Davenport LLC. He's Vice, Senior Vice President there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, nice to see everyone this evening. You may recall, in late August, at your work session, we talked a bit about financing for the city's water and sewer capital program, which is something that was adopted by council within your capital improvement program with the budget. And basically, will provide funding to maintain and keep the various improvements and construction projects required for the water and sewer system going. The public hearing this evening is on an issuance of revenue bonds, which is a very typical way and method by which cities across both the region and the state finance water and sewer capital projects. It's paid for entirely by revenues of the water and sewer system. This is not reliant on revenues of the general fund nor of the taxes of sort of taxing power of the city, but rather, it's paid for entirely by the users of the water and sewer system. The entity that will be sort of issuing the bonds in this case will be the Virginia Resources Authority. It's a longstanding state entity that helps local governments like the city all across the state finance capital projects, whether it be water and sewer or other sort of general things in the scope of sort of the typical business of running a city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions that the council has. I believe you have a public hearing and then a resolution later this evening that was prepared by your bond counsel, Maguire Woods. And that would authorize, in essence, the Virginia Resources Authority to sell bonds on the city's behalf around October 30. This will be the last action that we need of City Council, and VRA will be able to go through their process over the course of September and October.
Thank you, sir.
Does any member of council have a question? Good. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing on the matter that's just been described. You need not to have signed up to speak at the public hearing. If you desire to speak, once I open the public hearing, please come to the lectern, state your name and address. We got that as a matter of record. And you'll have five minutes to speak. As I open the public hearing, and the public hearing is now open, there is one person that's signed up to speak, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name, good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Resolution 19-327 is for the contractual agents, the elected, to authorize the city manager to contract a debt for $36,800. This debt will be paid by a water and sewer revenue bond. The revenue bond money will pay for acquiring, constructing, and equipping capital improvements as reported in the city's capital improvement program. The revenue bond money will also pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. When did the deputy city manager for the Department of Utilities give a report on the need to contract this debt? When was this information given to the public? None of this information was given to the city council at a work session. Of course, I'm wrong because he just reported. The deputy city manager of the Utilities Department did not review information regarding acquiring what, constructing what, and equipping capital improvements. What does that mean? On page 9-16 of the, for the year 2020 adopted budget, it reads that the total expenditure budget for the utilities is over $50 million. The budget includes salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, debt service, capital outlay, and transfers, which equals the over $50 million. Under strategic goal, nothing is listed to contract a debt for this amount of money. In addition, there's a statement saying that the city council may amend the capital improvements program from time to time hereafter. What does that mean? How is this money, bond note, going to be entered into the public utilities fund and the budget for 2020? On page 14-80, let's review the capital improvements municipal facilities list. The public utilities operation facility appropriated to date $60,000 for the year 2020, over $1 million will be appropriated. Then there's a category, transfer from public utilities fund appropriated to debt to date of $600,000, and for the year, over $1 million for the year 2021 to 2024 of $700,000. Under debt funding category, there's a future bond issuance appropriated to date over $31 million. For the year 2020 is over $9 million. General obligation bond appropriated to date over $24 million. For the year 2020, three, over $3,000. No, $3 million. Then there's the public utilities revenue bonds appropriated to date is $150,000. Then there are transfers from the public utilities fund of $600,000 to date. For 2020, there's going to be a transfer of over $1 million from, for the year 2021 to 2024 of $700,000. The CIP toll will be over $2 million. There's something dreadfully wrong when they request for more borrowing of money. Before the city council votes on this tonight, the elected needs to have all this information given to the public. By the way, how did the city manager get this information and the agenda before the review was given to the public? The furthest resolution until the public is informed. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. If you desire to speak at this public hearing, I invite you to come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes to speak on this issue. Does anybody desire to speak on this issue at this public hearing? Does anybody desire to speak? I declare the public hearing closed, and Councilman Battle has asked for the floor. Councilman Battle?
Ms. Si, you brought up some valid questions. This is a large sum we're dealing with. And as a councilperson, I really haven't dug into this enough to vote for this at this time. We may have had a briefing, but I don't think that what was introduced was extensive enough. So I'm gonna ask that we possibly delay this vote and...
Councilman Battle, you'll have that opportunity when we get to item 19-331.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is item 19-312. And Madam Clerk, will you read that caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, one, establishing a new project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund known as the City Hall Relocation Project, and two, appropriating and transferring the sum of $475,000 in interest savings from the debt service fund balance to the City Hall Relocation Project.
So that we can discuss this matter or not discuss, can, is there a motion? The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Park.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I move that we table this item to a future date to the point where we can take into consideration the comments made by citizens last night, provide this information to Dr. Patton, city manager and her team, and provide information back to us to make a decision at a future date.
Sir, second. We have a motion that's duly made. Because this is a motion to table, there's no discussion. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-328. And well, that's the consideration and adoption of a certain ordinance. Will you read the caption of that ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, it's attached to this. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $32,250 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said sum in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services for mental health outpatient services.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion? We have a motion that's been made to adopt this ordinance that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on this motion? And we do have one registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. And Madam Clerk, I mean, Mrs. Si, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-328 is an ordinance accepting over $32,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health for the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services for mental health outpatient services. The Behavioral Health Services is a community service board that provides community-based mental health, intellectual disability, substance abuse, and prevention programming to the residents of the city of Portsmouth. The adopted budget for the Department of Behavioral Health Services for year 2020 is over $14 million. The funding source is the Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund of over $14 million. Now, the state is providing $32,000 to the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Health Services for mental health outpatient services. And the budget outcomes and accomplishment, it reads that the waiting list is zero, that the consumers are seen in one to 14 days. So we need to get a report on why the Behavioral Healthcare Department is asking for this money. So that's what I'm saying. We need some better communication about the money that is being transferred and why it's needed, instead of just having a resolution where I have to come up and speak. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion to adopt this ordinance? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which carries, takes us to item 19-329, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,081 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt? We have a motion on the floor. It's been duly seconded. Ready for discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Here and none? Ready for the question? All, yes. Oh, we do have a speaker. Thank you. We have one speaker, and that's Mrs. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. The ordinance 19-329 is a grant of over $10,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. This money is to be able to operate the local probation and pretrial services in the city. We need to have a report from our constitutional officers on this need for money. The judicial information in the budget book is under the judicial tab seven. The tab seven was left out of the budget book. We need to have the constitutional officers giving to the people a report once a month. We also need to have an organizational structure that includes all the cabinets of the five constitutional officers, so the people can get a report on statistics monthly. We need better communication and structure in this city. Right now, y'all are doing all the decision-making.
Thank you, ma'am. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-330, and that's the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $330,296.78 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism for the USDA Summer Food Service Program.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion to adopt this ordinance, and it has a second. We're ready for discussion. We have one registered speaker, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-330 is an ordinance to accept a grant of over $330,000 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for the year 2020 Grants Fund for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism for the Summer Food Service Program. This is a lot of money for food to feed the people in Portsmouth for the summer. We need to be teaching people how to be self-sufficient. And one way is to have the public schools provide part of their land for gardens to be planted. They also need to provide education on how to plant gardens and how to can the produce. We need to get young and old alike to start physically working to take care of their need to eat. For the people to sit back and have their hand out to be fed is reason to have so many homeless people walking the streets with their hands out. We have a Virginia Tech Extension Agent here in Portsmouth that can help the school system implement a program to teach old and young how to plant a garden, take care of a garden, and learn how to can the produce. Let's get to work.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 19-331. And would you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of revenue bonds by the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, and establishing the terms, details, and provisions for the payment thereof water and sewer system revenue bonds, total principal amount not to exceed $3.8 million. Thirty-six point eight million.
Thirty-six, thirty-six...
Yeah, thirty-six.
Thirty-six million, eight hundred thousand.
Yes.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion on the floor. It's been duly seconded. Ready for discussion, and we have one speaker, Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-331 is for an ordinance to authorize the city manager to get a, an assail revenue bond to establish the terms, details, and provisions for the payment of the bond for water and sewer system. Go back to the resolution 19-327. It is a proposal to contract a debt to acquire, construct, and equip capital improvements. Where is the evidence to support this request? Then to have an ordinance, 19-331, to establish the terms, details, and provisions of payment of the bond for the water and sewer system is why our city is in financial trouble. Where is our financial CPA to have facts instead of inquiries? We need qualified financial experts to help Portsmouth get rid of our second-class reputation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, boards and commissions. I don't think we have a report. Good. Items submitted by council. In addition to the item that we have here, we have a need to add two additional items. One is the consideration of counseling our meetings on the 7th and 8th because of the conflict with the 2019 Conference of the VML. And the other is a motion for the compensation for appointees. Is there such a motion to add these to the agenda? Is there a second? The motion is to add two items to the agenda under items submitted by City Council. Because this is a new item, our council rules allow anybody that wants to speak on this motion, you're welcome to come to the lectern.
What is the motion?
The motion is to add two items to the agenda.
And I'm gonna speak on that?
I invited anybody that desires to speak to come to the lectern.
All right. Well, I wanna speak, but I don't know if you're talking about the VML conference?
We're adding two items to the agenda, ma'am.
What are they?
Please speak. The motion is to add two items to the agenda. Please, if you don't want to speak, please sit down.
Oh, shut the hell up.
Ma'am, that language is not...
I don't need the disrespect that you're giving me this, right now, please. And I say, no, don't add them to the calendar if you want to know what I think, and it's
Any further, Councilman Glover?
Well, I did have some comments, not related to this, but items submitted by council this past weekend.
Let's consider the motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
All right. All right. So we have a motion to add these two items to the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. All right, that motion carries. Now, we go with the first item, which is the adoption of a resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution?
Adoption of a resolution confirming a declaration of local emergency due to the threat of Hurricane Dorian impacting Portsmouth, Virginia.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt this resolution. Sir, second? We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. We're ready for discussion. And we do have one registered speaker, and that's Mark Yodoguy Yotroski. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. When a declaration of emergency is issued, there are certain rights of citizens that are compromised. Our emergency ordinance allows the emergency manager to have extraordinary powers that are commensurate with the nature of the emergency. And among those are the ability to confiscate, I'm sorry, to appropriate property of citizens and businesses in this community. Consequently, it is not advisable to have an open period of time beyond the actual emergency that is contemplated in which the state is to continue. Therefore, I ask you to amend your resolution to close the state of emergency as of this date. Otherwise, that status will continue for 14 days from the original declaration. And as everybody can see, there is no threat from Hurricane Dorian to this community at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this motion? Here and none? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And that motion carries. Our next item is the counseling of the, the meetings on the 7th and 8th of October. Is there a motion to do that? So moved? Any discussion on the motion? I will invite anybody that desires to speak on this matter to come before us, and you have five minutes. Here and none, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, which is to counsel the... All in favor of the motion, which is to counsel those two meetings? Pardon me? Oh, yeah, I did. Well, that was, the motion is to counsel the two meetings and the first two meetings in October because of their conflict with the Virginia Municipal League 2019 Annual Conference. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that, that motion carries. The next item, we have one more. The next item is the consideration of a motion pertaining to the compensation of our appointees. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the base salary of the city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and city assessor be increased by four percent over their stated salary in their most recent contract or addendum thereto. That the city manager employment agreement provide terms that ensure proper VRS credit for services rendered. That the city attorney is awarded a one-time bonus of nine thousand, two hundred dollars for services rendered. And that the mayor execute the necessary documents to fulfill the sentiments of city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Now, the chair recognizes Councilman Glover, and then Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and on behalf of my colleagues on council, I just wanted to personally thank our city leadership, our first responders, the sheriff's department, all of those who had a hand in making sure that we were prepared as a city to weather the storm Hurricane Dorian, and that we came out pretty much unscathed. I think it's a credit to how things were handled and how we were prepared. I'm glad that everyone was safe and sound, and thank you again for your cooperation.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Simmons, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder to the public that tomorrow is September eleventh, and the city will memorialize the nineteenth anniversary of the tragedy on nine eleven, two thousand and one. We will have a remembrance ceremony at the foot of High Street under the flagpole at six p.m. that, of course, is free and open to the public. On Thursday night, weather permitting, we will have our final Sunset Thursday concert, which was rescheduled from last Thursday because of the storm. That is, that concert will be from six thirty p.m. to nine p.m. at High Street Landing, and the band's name is Custom Made. And then next week, on Monday, the sixteenth, at seven p.m., we will have a community meeting at Bydaway Pavilion at seven p.m. That's when we round robin at tables and listen to you. There is no agenda. It's to sit around the table and for us to listen to the citizens. So we encourage you to come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This brings us to a report on pending items. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, during the August twenty-seventh meeting, there were four non-agenda speakers. One speaker required action by staff. Elliot Corn advised city council of overgrown grass on the ditch beside the City Line Plaza Shopping Center. The city engineer has advised that the ditch canal adjacent to the City Line Plaza is likely tidal influenced by the nearby creek. A jurisdictional determination for wetlands, et cetera, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is required prior to any disturbance. This determination is being requested.
Thank you. We come to non-agenda speakers, and Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol again, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Mark Yodoguy-Yotroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. There's a clause, a phrase in the Declaration of Independence that is frequently in my mind, and it is the one that asserts that the authors of that document, that foundational document of our republic, were very mindful and respectful of the opinions of humankind, and that therefore they felt it was incumbent upon them to explain to their fellow inhabitants of the planet why it was that they were seeking independence from the United Kingdom. And I think that decent respect is something that we all should have for our fellow citizens, for our elected officials, and therefore I'm explaining this evening why I refused to state my address when I came here last night. The direction from the mayor, and it was repeated, was for me to state my address when I stood up to speak. In the twenty-three years that I have been a resident of Portsmouth, that has never been a requirement for a registered speaker. And so for the mayor to impose that as a requirement, not only on me, but on some others who came up, but not on all others who came up. At some point in that proceeding last night, he just began directing people to state their address. It makes sense for that to be part of the procedure when somebody walks up without pre-registering. The minutes of your meetings reflect all who have spoken, and anybody who has pre-registered has already put that on the record with a city clerk, and it will be properly reflected in the minutes. But for someone who filled out the card and provided that information, it's superfluous. And in an environment where you have a five-minute speaking time, and you may not go a second over those five minutes, every moment is precious. And so I did not want to squander my time by providing information that was already on the record. And members of council who are sticklers for points of order, I'm really surprised that nobody called a point of order on the mayor, because he doesn't get to spontaneously change the rules of order and procedure for this body. I know that there are some seated at that dais who have called out previous mayors when they deviated from the script. So I think you were failing in your conscientiousness. The other area in which council was deficient in its performance was when the mayor, on his own, extended the public hearing without giving you all an opportunity to express your wishes. The mayor does preside over the council, but as Mayor Hawley used to say, "I'm here to serve y'all." You, as council members, should have had a say in whether those proceedings were extended. Now, I'm somebody who believes that more citizen participation is always better than less, but nonetheless, you are done in disservice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Mitty.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the gentleman. Unless the address is germane, as he said, when you register to speak, you record your address. Also agree that with the decorum issue, our city clerk reads the rules of council, rules for speaker, and I think those are being ignored. Only one person up here has a gavel. When I hear someone tell the mayor where to go, and it's not on a nice trip, like I heard a while ago, that person should be called out of order immediately. I've heard other speakers use foul language. It looks like the rules, even though this council agreed to them, they aren't being enforced, at least on a consistent basis. So I would like to, I would like to see our rules enforced for speakers and applied to council as well. I even heard last night, as awful as it sounded, that somebody was going to shoot somebody. And that goes out onto the airways of most of Hampton Roads. And quite frankly, I think it's embarrassing when that type of language is used. So that's my thoughts on it. The speaker has a good point.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Latasha Tinsley. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
I have been in the city of Portsmouth for seven years now, and I have watched so many violent things, killings, bullying, and different things like that. And I just want a change for Portsmouth. I've come here to propose that we should put prayer back in schools, because before we started, we had the man from the Lutheran Church, the Reverend, to pray. And I believe that peace will come back into the school, and that children will get back in order, and it will put, you know, joy, peace, and love back into the school and out into the community. God wants prayer to be back in school, and I'm here just to propose it to make all of us aware that we need God everywhere. There are so many bullies. There are things happening inside of the school that, you know, we are all aware of. And I know that Jesus is powerful, and I would like for you guys to just consider that. When prayer was in school, it wasn't all of these things happening. So I just want to propose that, that we just think about it to change the community and change the school, and that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments, and we recommend that you take your message to the school board. Okay, thank you. That concludes our non-agenda speakers, and this concludes our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.